Chairman Madonza.
Here.
Counselor Kennedy.
Here.
Counselor Martin.
Here.
Three present.
All right, we're here this evening to continue from the last meeting. We had one item left on our agenda, which was the memo we received on August 14th regarding the internal audit, internal being the city's own audit of the parking garage operations. At this point, I'll turn it over to our auditor to give us the highlights of their...
Absolutely, absolutely. Attached with find my report on the internal audit of the parking garage. I've structured the report in a way that the first part is the internal audit and testing of policies and procedures of the parking operation. The second part is the history, findings, and recommendations, and the final part is my conclusions. I reviewed all documents from 2008 to 2012. I interviewed Central Parking employees along with city employees. I've reviewed personnel files of the Central Parking personnel, and I've been in contact with the Monomacan and the Metric vendors. I hope this report sheds some light on what has occurred and helps with our decision on future operation from the parking department. I don't know if you just want me to read the highlights, and then you can ask questions as we go along, or at the end, or...
Yeah.
Whatever your wish is.
I don't know if any members have questions, but we could probably, if you have any particular highlights you want to... Otherwise, we'd get to the recommendations and conclusions.
Sure, sure. Let me just tell you how, first, how I ran the audit. What I did to verify the theft and integrity of the system is to run the metric reports all the way back to 2008. And then I verified approximately 6,000 transactions back to the bank statements. I verified the credit cards in total by the credit card clearinghouse reports against the bank deposits by month. This is because sometimes it takes as much as five or six days for the credit cards to clear, so you have to do them by the month in total. I verified the integrity of the original report done by the kiosk supervisor by obtaining a report for the monthly totals back to 2008 generated directly from Metric. I actually had the captain in charge of the investigation go to Metric and get it that way. So I checked both sides, how Metric currently was, and coming directly from the company itself. I went directly from the kiosk reports to the bank, but when it was originally done, she had done it utilizing the faxed bank reports and deposit tickets to the kiosk report. If one deposit ticket was misplaced, she would have missed that deposit. So my final figure is a little bit lower than her first figure. She first had $37,292.95, and I ended up with a final figure of $35,422.10. The documents that I reviewed included the weekly kiosk reports all the way through, all the bank statements, deposit tickets, faxed bank reports, and turn-in sheets from the same timeframe. My first recommendation. Metric reports need to be run each week and given to the treasurer with a turn-in. This is now being done. There is a deficiency, though, in the Metric software, that when a software upgrade occurs and the counters are set back to zero in the reports, we have no way of knowing what was in the kiosk before it was reset. In speaking with the new acting parking director, what they're doing is coordinating and timing those upgrades now, so that everything is empty before the upgrade occurs. Also, what was happening is the kiosk technician was doing the upgrades out in the field. That's no longer being done either, because he's doing the collections. So in order to separate those duties, what they're doing is having Metric and the kiosk supervisor through the back, they call it back room, which is the server, they're doing all the upgrades there. So they're not touching... The same person that's emptying the kiosk is not touching the software. So that is... That's being done, and that's... That was a big piece of it. When you have the same person emptying as doing the repairs, as doing the reporting, that was a big piece of the issue that we had. So we're now coordinating that, and we're having different people doing the work.
Is that... I thought I read somewhere that that's for the older systems?
Older and newer.
The newer ones also?
Older and newer.
Okay.
The difference between the old... The older ones were having the bigger problem with wiping everything out. But both systems were having the issue having the same person doing the upgrades and emptying the kiosks. So that's all set now. I also know that the acting director has been working with Metric and Monomacan to do the analysis on the software, to see if upgrades can be done to the software we currently have. The first thing that Metric is coming across with is saying that we need to actually upgrade all the Metric 1 machines. That's not the answer. That's not the answer. If they installed those, we have a warranty on them, they need to upgrade the software to be foolproof. So they're still working on that issue. Five parking garages. Oh, sorry.
I just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
The Metric system is software, and you mentioned earlier that there was a problem because it goes back to zero?
Right. When they upgrade the software in the machine itself, it resets to zero.
Has anybody called the developer of the software to find out?
Yes, they're working with Metric, because Metric actually developed the software and actually have the kiosks themselves.
Well, what did Metric say about the fact that it goes back to zero?
They said that they were working on it, quote unquote. But I think that we have some legal hammer in our toolkit to say, "Look, these weren't right from day one. You need to fix it. You need to fix it now, and the answer shouldn't be that we need to buy new kiosks."
Do you know who it is that spoke with the people at Metric?
I believe, well, it was...
About that, about this going back to zero?
Mike Herbert and the kiosk supervisor, and I think somebody from Central.
They did? Okay. I mean, if this occurs in Lowell, it must occur in other communities as well.
Absolutely.
So they didn't have an answer? Just they're working on it?
They're working on it.
Okay.
Mike will be able to give us a better idea. I actually have a meeting with Michael tomorrow to see where he is on all of my recommendations.
Okay. When you did the audit for this audit that you're talking about?
Yes.
That's the first time that you've looked at the Metric system?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So is that the first time you've done an in-depth audit or analysis of the finances at the park... in the parking department?
Yes, going all the way from beginning to end, yes.
No, I mean, just on... Just annually? Just, I mean, ever? In the time that you've been here, which is like six years, and the time we've had the Metric system, which is roughly about the same amount of time?
2008, I think, is when it was installed.
Have you, during your tenure, ever looked at the parking department closely?
No, I have not.
Okay, so this was the very first time?
Correct.
Okay. Do you ever look at other departments?
Well, that's what I'm doing now on a quarterly basis. I'm going from department to department and rotating around.
Okay, but you weren't doing that prior to when? This year?
Last year.
Prior to last year?
Correct.
Okay. That's it.
Counselor Martin?
So this resetting to zero happened when they upgraded the software?
Correct.
And that happened once?
Maybe two or three times.
So it's a new version? They come up with, you know, version 2.1, and then all the data you had before is...
Correct. Well, it's like, it resets it back to zero from the last time it was emptied. So you still have all the old data, but from the last time you emptied it, let's say there was $100 in it, and you didn't empty it, and you put in new software, that $100 would go away for that timeframe.
It wouldn't get reported, but it would still be in the machine?
Correct, correct.
All right.
So, I mean, I found a big issue in 2009, when it appears that they did all the machines. That was the one time I found that they did all the machines. But my recommendation is, until they get the software fixed, they need to coordinate when they empty. It needs to be emptied completely if it's going to reset itself.
Do they view that as a defect, or they just view it as an implementation?
I think they view it as implementation. I view it as a defect.
So, okay.
When you say "they," you mean the people in the parking department?
Metric. I mean...
The software company.
The software company.
All right, maybe... Could you explain to me, then, exactly, who is the one that moves it back to zero without emptying the kiosks?
There was no coordination being done with emptying the kiosks themselves and installing the new software. So "they" being whoever was doing the implementation.
You mean, doing the upgrades?
Yes.
So if Metric sends an upgrade, and you install the upgrade prior to emptying the machines, then you have a problem?
Correct.
And that's happened three times?
That I found, yes.
Okay, so after it happened two times, didn't it occur to anybody that maybe they should wait until the kiosks would be empty before they installed another upgrade?
You would have thought. You would have thought. They are doing it now.
Okay. And so when Mr. Hurt, he called Metric, didn't they just tell him to do that, then?
They didn't tell him to do that. He asked about fixing the software, and they basically said, "Well, you know, you'd have to upgrade the machines."
Okay. But is it a case where the software is faulty, or is it just that you shouldn't do an upgrade to the software until the machines are empty?
I see it as faulty, but that's my opinion. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
But what we did is exacerbate that issue by not emptying the kiosks before we installed the software.
Okay. So going forward, what do they intend to do?
Going forward, Metric is still working on the issue, and going forward, what they're doing now is emptying the machines before they do the upgrades.
So then they shouldn't have...
And that's being supervised by...
Okay.
The director and the kiosk supervisor.
All right, and that's probably what they're doing in other municipalities where they have the metric system, right?
I would think.
But we never used the Metric system, so we didn't... When I say "we," I mean, the parking department never used the Metric system, so they probably didn't know to do that.
They probably didn't even know that that was occurring. And until you go back and I start to reconstruct everything, it was like as plain as day.
So when you say it's happened three times so far, is that three times so far this year?
No, no, no. It's since I went back to 2008.
All right. When you went back and looked back to 2008, you found three times where that occurred?
Yes.
Okay.
But not on all machines. In December of '09, it was just about all machines, all Phase 1 machines.
Okay. But I thought a few meetings ago, when we were speaking about the parking department, what we were told is that no one used the Metric system there, that they didn't use it, and that even... And that, not you, but in the parking department, that even though they were trained, nobody used it. And when they were retrained, nobody still used it. And that nobody used the Metric system until this woman was hired, and she knew how to do it without the training. You remember that conversation? Okay. So how did it happen three times, then?
Because I went back, and we ran every single report since they were installed.
I understand...
And compared that to...
I understand all that part of it.
Okay.
I guess all I'm saying is, when it occurred three times, if they weren't using the Metric system, then how did it occur three times if they weren't using the system? If they were not using the software, then why did they bother putting updates into the software? And do you follow me?
That's a very good question. I don't know why. It could be that they were just told to by Metric to do the software upgrade. I'm not sure.
And they just did the upgrades even though they didn't use the system?
They weren't using the... They weren't using the reporting portion of it.
What portion of it were they using?
That, I think, just the tickets that were coming out of the machine.
Okay, all right.
But what I did was run them all the way back, and that's how I could see where it was happening.
Okay.
And so obviously, we've rectified it as much as we could at this point in time, and then hopefully Metric is going to step up to the plate and do something about the programming.
Counselor Martin?
Well, but until they do, and I suppose that could be an issue with our contract, what they're required to do or not, but until they do, we're going to not upgrade any kiosks unless they're empty.
Absolutely.
Right?
Absolutely.
And just to clarify, I asked earlier, but we have Phase 1, Phase 2 machines. Is this a problem in the Phase 2 machines, or just the Phase 1?
It's bigger in the Phase 1 machines, Phase 2.
Just a bigger problem?
Yeah.
Okay. You want to continue with the recommendations?
Sure. Moved around here. In speaking of the parking garages and how I did the audit there, each of the five garages and three lots are managed by Central Parking. They use Monomacan software to control and report our revenue and ticket sales. The software is an integrated financial and reporting program that clearly generates and reports that are auditable. It reports for cash, checks, credit cards, debit cards, and also they report the passcards and gate activity for the garages. I've reviewed the transactions for each garage for one month of each year, January of '08, April of '09, October of '10, February of '11, and February of '12. I just randomly picked one month of each year. And traced all reports directly from the bank statement for all the activities, and found only minor variances in the timing and the reporting of the general ledger. The deposits are made daily, but the turn-ins are made once per week, so that there's a variant... That's where the variance occurs. On the credit card side, the system has wired internet access to the credit card clearinghouse. Central Parking has the accounting support that traces all the credit cards, and the secured network from the accounting system to the credit card clearinghouses assures that all credit card transactions are accounted for. I basically found no variances, other than timing of a day or two, one way or the other. I reviewed the weekly turnover packets, all deposit tickets, computer-generated reports, prenumbered deposit bags. Central Parking's daily report is prepared by the garage supervisors and confirmed by the Central Parking's internal auditor. They have an internal auditor that goes through all the Central Parking reporting, and he does a really good job. Each of the five garages have the following devices connected to the software system: pay stations, express fee computers. The only issue I have with the regular operations is leaving the deposits in the safe for any length of time is obviously a security risk. We need to work with Central to update their procedures so that the deposits are made at the end of each shift and do not wait for the night supervisor to collect the revenue. And I've also found that not all passcard holders have been charged at the same rate. Central is working to have... Central is working to have someone do it at the end of the shift versus having it in the safe overnight. That's just asking for trouble. There hasn't been any issues that I can determine, but why, you know, put something out there and have an exposure that you can avoid quite easily? I think Central's on board with that, and again, I'll find out tomorrow from Michael where they are in the process of changing that.
Counselor Kennedy?
Isn't that just a matter of taking a deposit bag and just running it across... I mean, it's...
Exactly.
It's right there, right? I mean, it'd take five minutes at the end of the day, right?
That's my point, you know, to have two people do that at the end of every day.
Yeah.
You know, at the end of a shift. Instead, they're doing their reports, and they lock up the money for somebody else to come in and to verify everything. Well, you know what? Put the money in the bank, and you're going to know what you deposited, and use that to verify it with all your reports.
Okay, and they just were never doing that for all of these years?
Right.
They've just kept it in the bank? I mean, in the safe? And the safe is in the office?
Correct. And it is a good control in one way, in that it's a separate person that was going in to get it and depositing it, but I think it's more important just to get the money in as soon as possible. The other issue that I found is the fees are structured by the city council, but one of the fees is $48 for the passcards for downtown residents in special circumstances that are outlined in contracts. The acting manager is going through all the contracts and making sure that they're all consistent. He found some that weren't exactly the right dollar amount and stuff like that, so he's redoing all those contracts. So everybody is paying exactly the same. And I have the recommendation that maybe the council should redefine the special circumstances, or better define the special circumstances, and not leave the special circumstances to the whim of the director. I mean, that's something to think about if you want to tie that down a little bit tighter. Okay. Surface lots and special events, Lot A and Davidson Lot, and the Hamilton Lot, which isn't online yet, all those lots basically run the same way, and in those, the passcard operation is secure. But we need to explore with Central to find a better way and a better system to control the surface lots when pre-sales tickets are used. These are all cash transactions, and therefore are more at risk. Although they have controls on the ticket numbers, there's a risk that individuals could let in people without a ticket. Now, in speaking with the director in Central, there's a way to secure it really fast and really easy, and that's keeping the gate down and make everybody buy the ticket. The problem is, then you have a backup of cars. So it's whether or not you want to deal with a backup of cars or less risk in somebody parking without paying. Again, I know that he's meeting with Central and seeing what other ideas they have out there. I mean, the easy answer is, keep the gates down. Put it on the special event setting, because that's what they have in their system. They could do the regular parking setting or the special events, which they charge 5, 10, 15, depending on what the event is. But you're going to have a backup of cars. So that's something we're going to have to weigh moving forward, what we want to do with that. It's a risk-benefit analysis sort of a thing. But he's working with Central to see if they can come up with some sort of... Another idea. But now, they're just doing tickets, the first ticket, the last ticket that they pull out of the system. Yes, they have control over it, but if the ticket's up, if the gates are up, you don't know who's going in.
Yeah.
I would think that the idea of putting the gate down is a bad idea, and I only say that because we want people to go into the downtown.
Right.
We want people to go to events downtown or anyplace else. And so you don't want to make it be that it's going to be... That it's going to be hard to get out of the downtown, or hard to get out of the garage once you get into your car. So I would think that would be a bad idea.
Right.
But when you come in for those events where they pay the cash, just, isn't there a camera there? Isn't there a camera at every gate? And so is the camera able to capture the transaction?
I don't... I have not looked at the tapes myself, to be honest with you. I don't know if they can pick up the plate number on them or not.
Okay.
The other thing I was coming up with is, we have a security staff, is to have a security guard with a lot attendant when you have an event like that. You know, it doesn't make it completely risk-free, but there's less risk if there's two people involved and two people being held responsible, but then you increase your costs. There's no easy answer.
No, I suppose there isn't... Well, there's got to be an answer that's acceptable.
Right, exactly.
But it would seem to me, I don't know, maybe if you put a sign outside saying, "Make sure you get your ticket," or maybe you have someone go through the garage at the... You know, if there's an 8 o'clock event, if someone went through the garage at 9 o'clock, then they would, right? And you could do it that way, and that would be a double check, and that would be a supervisor that would do that, and then make sure that the money matches up, or at least is pretty close to matching up. I mean, I don't know. I guess that's... There's got to be a better way than just putting the gate down.
Right, right. But these are things that are being worked on. I mean, I'm just trying to present the facts as I found them and what we're doing as we move forward.
Counselor Martin?
I agree with Counselor Kennedy that, you know, leaving the gate down is a bad idea, whether it's on the way in or the way out. It just isn't practical, and it causes frustration for people, and it's the exact opposite of what we're trying to do. And I... But I think one possibility would be to look at capacity, you know, so that, you know, if we knew there were 100 spaces in the Davidson Street Lot, and so the guy takes, "Here's your 100 tickets," and it's $10 apiece, so at the end of the night, you come back with, you know, nine tickets. Or, you know, if you have 10 left over, we want $9,000, or, you know, $900, how the math works out. So that's not perfect, because we don't, you know, if it's a big 900-space garage, you're never going to know what the parking was, you know, to start with. But these smaller lots, that something like that could work.
Right. The problem isn't with something, let's say they're having something at the auditorium, people go in and stay there for a certain amount of time. It's when people come in and out at an event. I mean, like if you say, like the Folk Fest or something like that, people come in and out. You know, that's where the issue lies, not with set-timed events.
Counselor Elliott?
That's exactly what I was going to ask. I don't agree that having the gate down is the best situation either. However, I have had a couple of people come up and tell me, yes. They've had to ask for the receipt. I mean, the individual was there with a stack, and, you know, they paid their money, and it was actually his wife that was driving through, and then he said, "Wait a minute, we didn't get a receipt for that." So, I mean, it does... It is taking place, and it's not the best of both, you know, the best situation, but it is a weakness where...
Right.
And I like Counselor Kennedy's idea. Maybe there needs to be a sign, you know, "Ask for your receipt." Otherwise, you know, they just let them through, they collect the money, and if they turn in X amount of tickets at the end of the night, you know, it shows how many they showed, but doesn't necessarily reflect how many cars are in there. And I think it's happening... Not a lot, but, you know, if you don't ask for your receipt, or they don't give you one, then someone's going to collect that money. So maybe the solution is, is... I don't know, maybe it's not, but a sign, a simple sign, you know, "Ask for a receipt." Otherwise, who will know how much, you know, who will know where that money is going?
For the cost of a sign, it's well worth it if there's two or three fewer issues.
All right, like Counselor Martin said, a 900-car garage, 10%, people don't ask them for their receipts, that can add up occasion, you know, after several events. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Do it, continue.
My sunglasses and...
Maybe time to move over. Want to move to a different seat?
I think so. I think maybe... I think over here will be okay now. Follow the... Okay. Yes. Mechanical parking meters. The parking meters are emptied three to five times per month. They take the money directly into the Tewksbury branch. Although the theft was from the kiosks, and we have greater controls on the meters, my recommendation would be to actually replace the remaining 455 meters with kiosks, because when administered properly, the controls are much greater for the kiosks than when the mechanical meters. Now, that involves some capital costs, and that will have to be weighed against the, again, cost-benefit. But to secure the meters even more than they are now, my suggestion would be to change everything to the kiosks, because now we're running them correctly, and there's... It's so much safer. It's so much more risk-free to actually have those reports in running correctly and having people doing their jobs correctly.
Good.
Any...
Just a comment. You know, the last report at least we got from Central Parking itself, if I read that right, since we started installing the kiosks, the on-street parking revenue...
Has gone up.
Double over five years, right? Five years ago was $350,000, now it's $700,000. pull up and know there's time in the meter, but that, you know, it seems like even with the issues we've had, we're doing substantially better with the kiosks.
Oh, absolutely. Plus, they have the handheld meters that actually, they can look down the street and know who's put money in the meter. So they can look down the street and say, "Okay, there's a car there, and there's no money in the kiosk." So they're much more efficient in writing out the tickets, whereas before they'd have...
But that's not in that revenue figure, is it?
Have they?
The tickets aren't in that revenue figure.
No.
This is just the income, right?
Right. But that has to be taken into consideration when you're looking at the total cost, 'cause it all is going into the parking fund.
Okay, thank you.
History findings and recommendations. We all know the history, that the treasurer set up the, the account and that they moved everything from the kiosks into the single account. The recommendation is the treasurer's office independently needs to verify turn-ins to the bank activity, and garage personnel can no longer look up bank activity, and the treasurer reconciles all accounts to the turn-ins for both the garages and kiosks. The auditor's office has and will independently verify activity from the turn-ins to the general ledger postings using the turn-in reports. This is now being done. Every single metric report is being turned in weekly, and the treasurer herself is reconciling all the bank statements. And that, and that's the key to the whole thing, that it's independently being checked by the treasurer with the kiosk reports and the deposits to secure. On the key issue, the acting parking director has addressed the security of the keys, but the rekeying of the vaults should be done immediately. Two vaults are delivered with each kiosk, and these were never inventoried or controlled. We should immediately move to barcode the remaining inventory. Well, as I understand it, he has not, it has not been rekeyed. What he's done is take control over the keys. I personally feel the rekeying is key here. But like I said, I don't believe, it has not been done yet, and I think it should be done.
Well, I do believe the server reported to us that they were going to do that.
They were working on it, they have not done it as of yet, I believe, so.
Okay.
But I think we should barcode the remaining inventory on the, on the vaults themselves, 'cause there's two vaults for every kiosk. So by simply barcoding each of them, we can keep track of the inventory and periodically and go check and make sure that we have all the inventory, because we had found that seven vaults were missing, and those were probably the ones that were taken when the, the cash was taken. So it's just another layer of security. I don't think we can be too secure in any of this. My next recommendation, collections. The department should never allow the same employee to both collect and report any revenues. These duties need to be separated for internal cash controls. As far as the kiosk supervisor and the kiosk cash collector's technician positions, the city should formalize those job duties by either hiring those positions in the city budget, or amend the central contract to include the legal responsibilities for the accounting, collecting, and maintenance of the kiosk system to Central Parking or another vendor. The contract should also be amended to include the new Hamilton Canal Lot, it's not in the contract at all. There shouldn't be only one person collecting the kiosk, there should be a security guard along with a cash collector. So the kiosk is not in the contract, even though we have Central Parking employees doing this work. So we should, we need to do one of two things. Either take them in and put them in the budget and be city employees, or have the contract amended to include all that work within the contract we currently have.
You're referring to the on-street kiosk?
Correct.
It was amended to include the one in the parking garage itself.
No, they're all in, the, the parking garages are all in the contract, it's, it's the on-street.
No, but I meant like the, the, on Merrimack Street, the early garage, I believe they have a kiosk that's inside the garage.
Inside, and those, I believe, are, are included.
They're included, yeah, that's what I was referring to, okay.
We either have to do one of those two things. As we, as it stands now, it's just, it's just not right, because they're doing work that's actually not within the contract, so one of those two things we have to decide on.
Okay.
Counsel Kennedy?
I, I just wanted to point out that, you know, the recommendations that you're making all seem to be good ones, but I think today, or at least it was supposed to be today, we started interviewing a new parking director.
Yes.
And today, the RFP went out for, for the, the contract.
Mm-hmm.
And so those people, once they come onboard, let's assume that, that it's not Central Parking or Standard Parking that, that is successful with the RFP, if it's somebody else, they may have other ideas or, and maybe better safeguards built into their system.
Correct.
And the parking director, I would imagine, or I would hope, would have his, his or her own recommendations as well, so, you know, so it's not like we can just adopt all of these recommendations, we kinda have to wait to see how that all takes place for...
Exactly. Well, I had done this back in August, so, you know...
Yeah, I understand.
It's a while be, a while ago, so...
Is it your understanding that the, because this is what I believe, that the contract will be extended to the end of the year, and so...
Yes.
The RFP process will be, or the selection of the new, the new parking private contractor will be, is it gonna take all that long to choose somebody?
That I don't know. I think you're gonna get more information...
You haven't been involved with that?
I think you'll get more information tonight from...
Okay, thanks.
The parking director. Well, again, we need to find out if Metric can update the software to Phase One machines so they can run independently and report on credit card transactions. They don't report on credit cards, they just send the file to the credit card company. So the Phase One, along with the other issue, should include a report on the credit card transactions, and I think they're working on that, too. And again, this would just be another safeguard to an already safe type of transaction. Recommendation, the city MIS department should immediately secure both the Metric kiosk server and the Amano McGann server, and either Central Parking or the city should enter into agreements for the maintenance of both the garage equipment and the kiosk equipment and Metric software. All agreements need to be reviewed by our law department, and we need to update the credit card software. Well, at this point in time, MIS has been working with, with the acting director to secure the service. They've entered into an amended agreement for the maintenance that includes the Metric software and Metric machines, because it just so happens that Amano McGann has purchased Metric. So they amended the contract to the end of the year to include all the equipment, 'cause we had some exposure there. So that's basically where we are with that. And they are now currently working with MIS to update the credit card software. Laws change sometimes, so that's why they need to update the software, so I guess the federal laws have changed, so, but they're working on that. The next recommendation is basically a repeat. Recommendation, department heads are responsible to report to the administration when any issues arise in the departments. The responsibility for the daily, daily operations was and is with the parking director. All issues should be immediately reported to the manager, all financial issues should be reported to the treasurer and auditor, and illegal issues should also be reported to the city solicitor. This is just a common sense thing. And I just added this recommendation, because obviously this is not what happened in this instance, and I just wanted to underline that. Some of these are repeats based on the history that I've found, but... Recommendation, these metric reports need to be run weekly by a city employee that does not collect the vaults and should be analyzed by that employee to make sure that all funds are accounted for. These reports should be then passed on to the treasurer's office with their weekly turnovers, so that the treasurer can reconcile them to actual bank statements, and this is currently being done. I guess I'll go right to my conclusion. On the kiosks. Due to lax internal controls by the parking garage director, an individual was hired, gained access to the kiosk vaults, removed them, and stole their contents during the timeframe of the summer of 2009 until November of 2011. He would deposit most kiosks and then take complete vaults and deposit the remaining money. We can only guess how he got into the vaults to empty them. The total I have confirmed to be missing is thirty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and ten cents. The metric reports that should have been run by city employees were never done. The, the parking director learned of the theft from the Central Parking employee that ran the kiosk metric software properly in November of 2011. The director chose to hide this theft from everyone but Susan Johnson, the Central Parking project manager, Jim Malloy, the Central Parking financial consultant, and Melissa McNeely, the Central Parking administrator slash on-street parking supervisor, and the kiosk supervisor that had found the theft originally. He entered into an unlawful agreement and never informed the police, the administration, the auditor, or the treasurer of the theft of the payment agreement. If the metric reports had been run, as the parking director said they had been run, this theft would have immediately come to light. The comprehensive audit scheduled for October would also have brought this issue to light. Proper controls and procedures are now in place, so that the theft of this type will never happen again. I have located in the media funds the seven payments Mr. Novoe has made as restitution, and I reduced the payment to, to Central Parking by the thirty-seven thousand, two ninety-two eighty-five. Well, at this point in time, I've taken more than actually what the theft was, so that's to be worked out with Central. Parking garage and surface lots. Proper controls for the five garages are in place, so as to ensure the processing of all revenues into the city, but the control of the physical cash should be made more secure by having the deposit made immediately after a shift. While the surface lots have some controls, we will need to put better equipment and procedures in place for those lots. We will be working with Central Parking to address these issues. That's the end of my report, and obviously I have all my evidence and backup information to show you how I actually did my analysis, what the reports look like, what the agreements look like, and if you have any other questions.
Counsel Elliot?
Thank you. Madam Solicitor, I, I don't know if you'll know this or not, and I, but regarding those employees that did know about the theft, are they still in the same positions and the same capacity at Central Parking?
No.
None of them at all? They've all been, they've all been removed, or they all been...
None of them are there now, right.
They're not with the company, they've been...
I don't know if they're with the company or not. I know they're not in Lowell.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, it sounds like most of the recommendations are already being implemented. You did highlight that there was a definition of special circumstances...
Correct.
...that need to be probably better defined.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know if my colleagues wanna refer that to the manager to get, have him review that language, or...
Well, I, I mean, I, I think the, of the recommendations that haven't been adopted, I think to Counsel Kennedy's point earlier, somewhat dependent on the new director and the new contract, right? Some of these things are gonna have to be incorporated in the new contract, so, you know, I, I think it's, it's fine to request that the manager report back on us on to, you know, what that new contract or what the RFP is gonna look like, so that some of these additional issues are addressed.
Absolutely.
Would you like to make a motion, refer these recommendations to the manager for review?
For, for review.
Second by Counsel Kennedy. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Counsel Elliot?
Just on that RFP and contract, Madam Solicitor, do you know anything about it? Again, I, I know it's probably not within your purview, but is it...
I, I don't know, but I, I believe that that will be discussed tonight with the administration.
'Cause the contract expires in six days, right? Five days, September? Isn't it September?
I believe that there's, that there's going to be an extension.
There is? And do we know how long that extension is going to be for?
I think through the end of this fiscal year, uh, excuse me, calendar year.
End of the calendar year.
Yes. So it's to give them time to get the RFP out in, so that we don't have any gap.
Okay, it's really the, the city manager, but I, it'd be interesting, so the, as far as you know, the RFP has not been sent out?
I, I think it's going out today or tomorrow. That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, if there's no further questions, that's all we had on the agenda. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Counsel Kennedy.
Second.
Second by Counsel Martin. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Where you stand, adjourn. Thank you, everyone.